I expect David to be here through the floor. It's seven o'clock. We should get started. And other people will be coming. So, Wendy, you're on deck.
Sure.
We are putting off doing the formal authorization of this. So, I think what's going on is you have a minor subdivision. But the problem is, I'm going to take one of our lawyers' advice on how to handle splitting off your subdivision, your subdivision application, from a larger subdivision.
Right.
Okay. So Tracy will tell me how that's done, or we'll wait and have David tell me how that's done. I don't know.
So this weekend last, I got Bill Thompson out of the issue looking at the original. Yep. And he gave me a letter, just like a brief explanation of the history of like how when we presented it, it was originally a six-odd subdivision. My request to the plan was essentially just to address mine separate from San Juan Woods, that's all. And I, you know, when I proposed the three-odd subdivision that I'm going to do, that I had no restrictions, not the same restrictions by San Juan Woods.
Here's your question.
You know, I always get...
How do we...
Sure, sure.
We have come to the point of wondering, how do we shuffle that? Here's my subdivision from the major subdivision that did, is a part of my subdivision. Well, because Tracy, as our, as our only lawyer in the room at the time, said that because she wasn't here, she shouldn't put the minutes, so therefore we didn't have the form for approval of minutes. And so we skipped right by that to doing the length.
Oh.
And so Tracy has been slaving over the minutes all the time.
Oh, it's not a bad...
Yes.
Yes.
All right, good. Well, again, yeah. Well, glad you could hit the floor, right? We just take a picture of it as a subordinate subdivision, subdivision, under subdivision. Yep. So another four, his purpose is, he submits a, an application for a subdivision.
Right.
And follow Wendy's to know.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, like, that Wendy is looked at moving forward if ever moved forward. Because like, right now, the way it's presented is that it shows us that Juan Woods is doing this. I thought Bill Thompson, as we talked about last time, was pretty clear, it shows the seven lots, which is what, like you said. And I just want to make sure, like, moving forward, it is not the same with the patients or restrictions, but first and then San Juan Woods has a thousand square foot minimum and some of that. When I present the, the minor subdivision, by all means, we talked about last time, there will be a driveway on lot seven, it has to be accessed off Grant Lane or Grant Road. And, but I just wanted to make sure that it's separate and we, whether we have to amend it to not show us lot seven, or our work with Bill to make that happen for sure. But the plan is one, too, I want to make sure it gets, uh, just addressed as it is.
My little amendment is going to go...
Right, okay, next one.
Yeah, I mean, when we, I mean, on the border, my subdivision, but my thought process is that it would be, we would, we would definitely look at the requirement of the, and on subdivision when doing your subdivision, and if they make sense for both, then they would be on both, like...
Oh, yeah, yeah, like move, in order to prove, right, that as long as that parcel, which shows them that that stuff, knows that it wasn't originally purpose for, to be a part of that subdivision, that's all. So it's being addressed as its own. So my own parcel, meaning for a hundred subdivision on that.
You're kind of saying, you're saying, yes, it's part of the subdivision on seven. But you're having, you're, you're seeking to create a new subdivision just on lot seven. And so we'll address the subdivision on lot seven on the phone.
That I'm basically stating that as a reference only.
I mean...
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you're never going to make that bad way, because it's on the document, like, like...
I understand.
We should keep talking to each other. We're going to let it go around and...
Well, I guess, the thing is, though, is I understand it's a piece of a mother lot, right, originally, but I don't know how it can be established, or I don't know how it can be a part of that subdivision.
Wait and see what we do. Wait and see what we do and talk with us as we do it, okay?
Sure.
Because what you're doing is you're, you're getting us mired, you know? You're digging a hole, and it doesn't matter, there's an argument over stuff, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
In substance, it doesn't matter.
All right, all right, yeah, yeah, you got it.
Okay? And just believe me.
Okay, all right.
Believe me. We will, we will, we will get through this.
Perfect, okay, yes.
Okay? Um, so what we're, what we're looking for from you is an application.
You got it, okay. Awesome. Awesome, that one, yeah.
Great.
I have an option, but I will not.
What do you have?
We want to work on it, you want to, yeah.
Yeah, eight to twelve tomorrow.
Sure.
And get your battery set, so this is, this is, this is going to be, so, so, well, are we going to talk about David's lawyer advice? Have you said that yet?
We, we did that.
We had that. So it's, or, like, it's not aggravated.
Right, the only thing, one of the... I told him he had a minor subdivision.
Okay.
That's all we need to know.
So, starting with that statement, that'd be good. So, you're going to do two, two, and seven.
Right.
Two acres, two acres, seven acres, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, so that's going to be a minor subdivision, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, but that seven acres, you've got to be careful about, because if you come back to us and say, "Oh, I really want to put that in two,"
Correct.
"You're a major subdivision."
Correct.
And you're not going to get any slack on it.
Correct.
Because you're doing it, you're doing it anytime around about.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I hold on to that for the timeframe.
It's always part of the subdivision.
It's always part of the subdivision.
So even if it's five years, it's still part of the subdivision. Even if thirty years from now, it's part of the subdivision. You have to come back. If you want to build, if you want to separate that lot in more, at all, and do it in two parcels, you're going to have to come back and get a major subdivision approval. Because it's, once the subdivision exists, it's, it's attached to that piece of property for eternity. I mean, you can have to do a subdivision, we found out in the subman do, or run, on the subdivision debate over there. Yes, because they didn't do it, so they swapped the record, I guess, to reextinguish it. So the divisions of properties were all unraveled. But once you put it into subdivision, they're forever. That's the thing that sucks. But you get the benefit of quickly parting off the property. So, I just think, like, that, that seven acre lot, if you actually have plans to put it in two, because I'm in the future,
I don't.
You better do it now, because it's going to be more difficult later.
Okay.
Just say no, give a fair warning.
Sure.
And that's your five fingers. That's right.
Yeah, I do, I get that.
Because later on, much as much as we're going to be more, to be far gone.
Sure.
Thank you, Wendy.
Yeah, I get that.
So, the next item on the agenda is doing the nature's wilderness, and since you worked your way through the conditional use permit, like you could be the one who wants to be in at this point, because I will leave the table.
Sure. Did we assure the mad yet?
No.
Do we want to talk about it? Do we want to talk about it?
Pretty much.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So the only, the only question, so assuming it's most important, so the only question was that reference to what you guys, and whether or not you change it to, you know, something less colloquial than, you know, water to paint, something, like they're getting along on.
I, I thought that it was the expression used and therefore should be in the medicine. I think it's wonderful to have, but colloquialism in the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, I agree. So, we're, I'm motioning second.
All right, I'll listen to you.
Yeah?
All right. All right. All right, so, give me a second, give me a, twenty minutes. So Wendy, Wendy, why do you have to do that with nature's wilderness?
Widening Marks Road.
Oh, yeah, the two...
Black Road.
Remember, last we asked you about the widening, uh...
We had, we had the issue about the entrance to Marks Road. We had the issue about the sign of the corner of Senator Black on one thirteen, and you're asking for a letter of credit.
And the signs on Senator Black.
There are signs on Senator Black.
All right, let's deal with the first three first, and then we'll talk about that.
The entrance road. Okay. Uh, I was out there today with Gary and with, uh, Brian, the road commissioner, and we talked about it, and we took measurements, and so on and so forth. And as it comes outside of the Black Road, the Marks Road, Senator Black Road, the area is twenty-two feet wide, Marks Road, the area, twenty-two feet wide, and the right hand here, radius twenty-five to thirty. The division divided, decided that the entrance is perfect. The pavement of the road is twenty-five to radius to the copper where the rock starts. There's gravel, there's a slight slope, both the pavement of the road to gravel, but the top of the rock, our, plus to the top of the road, so it was recommended and agreed that, uh, Brian, with some hard pack and gravel there, so it levels up, it was leveled with the road, so if the wheels don't get into that area, it won't tend to yank the trail over further. But twenty-five to radius is, is, uh, a dimension that is recommended in the ordinance.
And nature's wilderness is going to take to that gravel that Brian's going to have there?
The public road.
They agree to...
How to try to keep the space, although he has an action.
They agree to...
It'll probably take a couple of...
I, I'm just asking the question, so you're not...
Just about what the paperwork.
Yes, I was informed by the road commissioner, we have not spread on the road, we need to fix the radius. Our radius is actually bigger than many other radius in the town, bigger than Chase Road, by about eight feet, bigger than, uh, Marks Road and further end, and on roads, two foot wider than the road actually coming in. So it's more than that. So he says he will put some gravel down just to, to pass the, the ledge, and be done. Yeah, I don't think it was us who was necessarily concerned with the turning radius, it was your...
No, it was you brought it up to have to do that. I never said I would do it, you asked me to do it.
Maybe you remember, maybe mine, my, my recollection, uh, a discussion with the road guy, who, who talked about that, when it was recommended, and stuff, on the three-hundred site, there was a lot of, he came in, I thought he was the one who said, "This would, this would be best part on the three-hundred site, too, because there's a lot of little changes that we had to make." That's why we stayed on the hundred sixty-ish. I never, while I offered to fix the town road, but it happened. You guys asked me to, so that's a minute. I guess I...
We can put it, we're, the road commission should have thought, it's bigger than other radius in the road in the town, so why are we being asked to...
Well, I'm, I'm not quite sure why you're being so aggressive there.
I don't know.
Can you kind of tone it down a little bit? You are, you are, sure, I'm, I'm calling, yes, you are. Only there, Wendy, we're having a discussion. So, so that's my recollection, is the York Road guy was the one who said it should be done. I don't remember us saying it should be done just out of the blue. So, you know, that's my recollection of how this issue came up. I guess I don't understand why there would be a difference between a larger campsite and a smaller campsite, except with the recommendations of the, for, type of count for a minute on the road.
Do you remember why a fire town for vehicles, made those roads require widening cannot necessarily, some extra vehicles identified more on the east that would need a wiring? Do you think that would...
I'm a little traffic analysis expert, so it was due to a traffic path, going on the radius and things like that, that I had to do.
So, Wendy, what do you want to do?
I mean, I have, because I can't call, I mean, we have to, we have the expertise to confirm whether there's compliance issues, if, if it needs to be fine. I, I can't call the discussion one, because I'm present all the time.
Right.
But Gary has received a minute, so you have received a minute to view of the content of the discussion one about the widening.
Just an example, Marks Road is sixty-two foot acre, across the front, so four miles to Senator Black. Chase Road is fifty-four foot acre, which is used by Dan and Phil.
Is that what you're saying?
Is that what Chase, where is Chase? That's like Dan and Phil, what we have to chase, or what's your name?
It's not like you guys do stuff.
No, it's just, I'm saying that was a lot from over there.
I didn't think about that, yeah, I didn't think about that, I'm only talking about, about this, right? I don't, I don't suggest by comparison, if it really makes sense, there's not, can't count on those rights, uh, that any of us...
Right, just, so I don't try to small, smaller than we are, but, like, the road is a part of some kind of people.
Right, that, that...
All right, I, that is in the section, underneath general warrants. There's a ten here, following two point three, which gives you a mention. It's a cluster road, so, so a couple of, twenty-five foot acres.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I actually remember why this is recommended, I, I, and so, I mean, I guess I'd have to check with, we'd have to look at the minutes and see, who was the one who recommended it, and if it was your road person, then I guess I'd want to continue to that road person to just say it, because my upgrade was, I mean, we all have to...
Two years ago, the public road, we have, uh, nature's wilderness had a funding, so we did the, work on the public road, at, at the camp ground area, not up to Senator Black or to the Marks Road.
I'm not saying they had to do it, I'm just, I'm just saying it had to be done, because they had to hire somebody and work with the town. I, I don't know the logistics, how it should be done, but, but my recollection is the road guy has, like, he has this fact all set out, it says, and then you guys agreed to do it, or had it done, it's going to be done, and so if it's a safety issue, that the road guy said that would need to happen, then, that's like, that should need to happen. If, if your, if your road guy now says this is totally cool, then I don't know how we would say anything different.
Well, the information from the road guy, Bill Bright, made the NDOT defect, you know, wasn't accepted, we already approved at that point, or just stipulations, it was tough. We already approved our CUP at that point. Kind of something you guys put in. Well, have we reached out to the road commission on this at all?
No, no, I haven't.
Because you should.
Because...
He's in charge of the road, he knows the information on that.
Because the application, and what, what the road commissioner says and what your application says are two different things. And all we can change your application, he doesn't have the power to change the CUP.
Gary, it does the same application, but we need to widen it, too. So what...
Well, on that, Wendy, on that... We submitted documents, we said, "You have to put it, you have to do what the document would say." That's all we're asking you to do.
If there's no, if we've submitted, no, it's Bill Bright and our CUP.
So, if we have to go back and get the original documents and show you where it is, line by line, to bend in the past, that's what we'll do, we'll come back and have another conversation.
You're listening, please.
How about the other stuff?
That, that will add more information to the, the town road, because they have nothing on road construction, but the subdivision does, with their handling, traffic.
Where, where...
Well, it's a...
Where do we talk to them?
Well...
Which part?
About that.
Oh, we saw, yeah, okay.
Yeah, subdivision, so, um, in low volume, that, curving should be ten to fifteen feet. The road should be between twenty and twenty-four feet. And here, Marks Road's twenty-two feet, but it's about six feet over on each side, so you're, or if, even Senator Black, only a few, there's only twenty feet.
But this isn't a subdivision.
No, but it's, it's hand me, low volume, that, and I'm going to get to the needed documents, now, what's the definition of low volume, is needed by, we don't know.
That's a subdivision, right?
Okay, I'm just stating that those dimensions are within the...
But it's, 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 just keep the paper, like, those pieces of papers, because it's, it's not that relevant.
Okay.
Like, whatever's in this, the CUP is what they're supposed to do.
Well, well...
Like, they're supposed to be, they're supposed to be following the CUP. Like, whether it makes sense now, that's, that's...
Correct. Perhaps when the CUP was written up, the input was law, or a little bit of faith.
Then they have to ask to change the CUP. And they come in and ask for a change to the CUP, like, we don't just make it up as we go along.
So you still, you don't try, you try to get some knowledgeable information, including...
We spent three years trying to get knowledgeable information, last. You were here for all three years, you lived through that, and we ended up with a CUP. All we're asking is that it be followed.
We can use your, all of that, that information we're talking about from Bill Bright, if it's in there, just pull it up, and we'll get the facts. But I know his information was on a three-hundred, like, camp house. After we scaled down, Bill Bright was like, "We didn't need it, we would find it, the NDOT guideline."
But part of what Bill Bright did was incorporated into the same case.
So, you incorporated, and, no, him, correct? His, his was suggestion, got that.
I thought he was there to educate the board about what was safe and what was going to say, and all this...
Three-hundred, like, chances.
Okay. So you could educate us on what was safe, and I'd say, "Why are projects in that X, Y, or Z?" And, so we incorporated some of those recommendations he made into the CUP, uh, whether it be a four-hundred or a hundred or whatever, they were incorporated in the CUP, and he agrees with us.
I get the information, we'll go with that.
Absolutely. At the next meeting, we'll, we'll bring nature's wilderness book in, and we'll call upstairs together.
Well, I got it, when we had talked about the sign up at the junction of Senator Black Road and one thirteen to direct traffic onto Senator Black Road, and let them know that that was the correct direction against the camp runs. I have mentioned that previous meeting, after, in my court, Matt, I said, Gary, before that, that, uh, he, uh, was not getting permission from the landowner to put the sign there, and we all know that the landowner was drunk.
Yeah, I get it.
He owns, well, and, um...
He hasn't been asked that.
Yes, he said that. I think Gary has a different opinion.
Okay, that you would...
Sure. Would you object in front of the height on the West Campside, Senator Black Road?
Well, I think this is a matter of private negotiation, and, uh, it's worth it. I mean, that, you know, I'm a capitalist, same here, yeah, right?
Um, it's worth being with neighbors.
Um...
Because I've been trying to...
How much more is it worth to...
Not be something like that, trying to be with neighbors.
That's not extortion, but I, so, so, not, not to interrupt, so no, sorry, I didn't agree much. Not to interrupt negotiations, but, um, so if you all want to negotiate, it's probably best to do it outside of this room. Just remind everybody, you say, "No, we're on camera, being recorded." Not just anything happening that, you know, like that, I just don't think this would be appropriate for, without that discussion, like that, I wish. But, uh, what, what I hear of the issue is, the landowner wants to be paid, and, and so that may not be able to work. Um, what about on the opposite side of the road? Who owns that?
He owns, oh, across on the, on the south side of one thirteen.
Yeah.
He owns that land, too.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
The struggle stage, that was, the project, the department had the time to put in the CUP, and everybody agreed on it, but somebody on the, on...
The landowner does the...
For...
Yeah.
Forcing a violation of the CUP.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think it's a violation that the landowner is not, yeah, just, I don't know, but...
Yeah, and how did it progress so far in the CUP, now the sign must be put there.
Well, it's signed, it's, like, no question. I guess, I mean, you agreed to that, don't you?
I guess it's on the center of the road, the road connection, you're trying to find out if we use the town domain on the end of the road.
Yeah.
It does, it goes off too much easily, so it doesn't work, so it's that, like, the only way to get into that road.
On the opposite side of the road, right, but, but couldn't, but couldn't, uh, couldn't, is it group one thirteen widening out, or...
It's a structure, that would be a huge sign. I think we believe, we believe, we know Senator Black Road is a three-rod road, I believe group one thirteen is a three-rod road, there are firsts, one thirteen is a four-rod road.
Yeah.
The radius, that's, it's so large, it doubles up the space of the one and a half feet sign.
We, I apologize, I don't know what you mean, what do you mean the radius?
So Senator Black Road has a radius, so number one thirteen, just like, like Marks Road.
Yeah, yeah.
Same idea.
Okay.
So the pavement goes, I haven't mentioned, but pretty close to the limits of the, of the wide way to go, so there's no, there's, sort of, with sign, or if you do, it's right at the end of the pavement, which is not a good idea. You know, get up and back up to five, a little bit, and you won't see everything on there.
Right, no, I think that...
And yet, upstairs, you're...
Yeah, I just, I was surprised when you said that if I want to, uh, rent my land rather than give it away, that you would then think that the, uh, the condition was not valid, because, I mean, I've done negoti, business negotiations, and the people that I've negotiated with...
I assume that there'll be further discussions, um, and, and what I'm trying to do is see if there's a easy alternative to putting it in a place that, that, um, in a place that doesn't burden your land, so that's what I'm doing right now. I, I don't think the board has made a decision whether or not to, you know, waive that condition because of circumstances, but, but I, I understand the applicant's position that, that, um, that an alternative may be, may be beneficial. So, that's what I'm trying to do right now, is just talk it through, since we have, it's like, first in the air, you know, we can, we can kind of talk about what my replacement option is.
We need to do some research about where the, the boundaries are of the state road. The state roads are the land that's owned by the state, whereas, uh, town road, generally, the landowner owns the center of the road, and the town has a right to, I don't think it's necessarily for standing for state roads, um, but we'd have to do some research, um, but it appears there's some state owned, uh, right of way, and when you decide, there might be, uh, I'm going to say you could put a sign on that.
There is a sign at the Black, street side, on the hillside, a little bit, like, next to this old relic of a steel frame, or used to be a sign right there, and we'll see if that's right.
That's what I would think, and, you know, not dramatic, take your attitude, disagree with it. So I, I would think that the, the board would be willing to, um, waive that condition, or at least find it not, you know, a violation of the CUP, if the applicant can show to us that, that it's unreasonable to be forced to... if the applicant can show to us that, that it's unreasonable to be forced to, to do that, you know? And, and that could be, I don't know what that means unfortunately, but, you know, an unreasonable amount of money, or, um, you know, not physically capable, like on the, on the left-hand side, like, you know, the spoke, spoke's pretty bad at this. I'm not sure if you could find that, um, even if the, even if, even if the rights are there. But I, I think the applicant would be coming to us and say, you know, they admit X, Y, or Z, and then submit to whether or not the board's gonna find it reasonable effort or not. You got there? So explore the, explore the state boundaries and, and see if she can help you with that. Um, explore with the landowner, um.
You just did.
This is a business, this is a business, this isn't.
Maybe other alternatives, yeah, yeah. Show us, and there's an alternative.
No.
But if the right one is fine, it's not fine.
Well, the one you do explore, figure that.
I've been there with a little commission, I explored and tried to do it.
So, so give it, so give us a diagram, show, show that there's no, like, show that, show the Route one thirteen that, you know, uh, right, sorry, they actually, so the Route one thirteen area, the Center Black area, you know, show how that setback is. You know, there's no place that we can put the sign as a matter of break with the town's permission. Um, you know, show the other side how it's not feasible to, or, or you can't do it on that side. Um, you know, maybe farther up the road, you know, maybe not at that intersection, maybe a quarter mile up the road, that's fine. I know you have a sign like two miles left, but, but maybe far, a little bit farther up. A tenth of a mile on the opposite side, so that, you know, um, you know, maybe for that. I, I'm just trying to, and I might get other.
Can I put it on the side of one thirteen? Previous to it, if they came down, they should have one mile. If I give them any little permission?
Um, one mile's quite a distance, but yeah, I mean, I mean, I think that's the alternative.
Captain, no?
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be a, that would be a better alternative than that thing.
You're talking, you're talking.
Like, I haven't been around, they came down with a tip. I have a terrible mindset about dating my driveway from where I work, which is working on the farm, who was treating me to come back again. I'm looking at opportunity to be a neighbor.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would come back after, before you actually put the sign in the ground. But, but I mean, there, there, there are alternatives. I mean, that case scenario, and that, which you put it on that intersection, every couple hundred feet is a, is a, is a worse alternative, but it's an alternative.
To me, it's, it's, if I move it up the road, if I can't see everyone, thirteen, it's just gonna be an eye for on the road, three other people.
Oh, I started last, I agree with that. No, I mean, yeah, when Route one thirteen, like, if it's a, if it's, if it's five hundred yards to pass, that's awesome. You know, if it's a mile, that's, man, a mile, well, that's a fast to do, but, um, yeah, that's a mile. It's still a mile, like, two miles, the one that's there now, that's way too far, like, I have to get where I am before I get to sign the law.
Let me ask you something. I can get it in the town domain, about a hundred yards off the road, on Center Black Road, on the side of the road, to see it coming down one thirteen, to the right, to clearly see it, and two to the field going up there. That's what the round sign that has been put up, clearly stated, one thirteen, heading to the right. It wouldn't do anything traffic coming from, turn to the left, it would take care of all from the right, which is a majority of our traffic.
Yeah, it's, you know. Yeah, talk, talk with them, make sure that that's placed with them. Uh, give us some basic stats, where it would be, and how big it would be.
Yeah, how, how quick the road permissions, and all the rest, where the sign is, and he's already granted permission two times.
So, so just put it down on paper, so we have a document with what you're gonna do, and if it comes in, it sounds, sounds better than what's there now. Yes, it's here.
Um, I would suggest that it doesn't seem to be having any problems with people not turning on Center Black Road. I don't, I haven't seen any problems with people overshooting Center Black Road, or not being able to take a turn, or, you know, it's, uh, I don't, they can use a sign.
Right.
This is the CUP set aside, and we're trying to equal that needed, if not, the speed of the road from here on.
I think that's, it's a, it's not, maybe a competition, like, it's harder through than maybe a competition, like, we don't know anybody who hits the road, but would we know if somebody did hit the road? I don't know.
Well, I, you know, I've seen people who just drove in fast truckers. And they end up jackknifing against the, uh, embankment. You know, on the other side of Center Black Road.
Well, let's explore that.
But I'm just saying, that would be my suggestion, is allowing not to have a sign. Because I think with, with, you know, everybody's got a smartphone now, and look it up on GPS. It's really handy.
Yeah, well, that's, I'd explore it, I think, before I, before I think I would do that.
You can play a few, I don't know.
Do a trick. A snack. Letter credit.
That there will be cost of damage, uh, there was a necessary area, you can't undershoot. Basically, what has been built, has been built for cash, it's not, so why would it be, um, basically, you said, what you wanted, a letter of credit, a financial religion, so that is, if you can't go fairly up, it's like.
Yeah. Right, credit.
So, yes, you want to finance a, a letter of credit from some financial institution, so it's, uh, can't go fairly up, uh, the town doesn't swallow it. Finish it, but, uh, our conversation is basically, things are built by towns and hills, there's nothing being built. So, if, if, if you can't keep doing business, uh, if the owner goes in, they go over.
But there was phase one, phase one done?
They had fifty-four sites filled with sixty, so, so it's within six of the maximum of fifty, so there's really no building to be done.
Right, I mean, it's a question of, is phase one, is phase one done? You're done with phase one? You know, the CUP was written in, in, the town was entitled to a letter of credit for the amount that it would cost to finish phase one. And this is in spec.
What would, what would cause an incident for the town to have to finish?
That question?
That speculation, it could be sold without doing any homework.
Right, but, but, so what, all we're trying to, all we're trying, all we're trying to do is follow the CUP. The CUP says X, Y, or Z. You know, the applicant signs the CUP, so why can't we follow the CUP? Like, I, I guess they just don't understand, like, like, at least in my opinion, like, is the CUP really not negotiable? Like, it is, it exists.
So, so now if the letter of credit's gonna be, why don't you help them, and sign, we have to determine what, what, are we gonna pick it or not?
Exactly.
But it's not the.
How much are we gonna cost?
It's a lot, nothing, it's nobody's, it's only forty, fifty-four.
Right. Right, so I mean, how, I.
It's a lot, nothing, it's nobody's, it's only forty, fifty-four.
If you were to go sixty tomorrow, or if you want to, so we need to something, or if this is.
I think, I think sixty, sixty-five, sixty-five tomorrow for five thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I think it's, again, it's, it's a, having some kind of basis to what you're projecting, right? So just like the new, um, the risk proposal about how to deal with design plans. You can say, okay, fifty-four or sixty are there, if I just do straight division, and I'm so fifty-four or sixty, and I allocate the even out for studying, not where you put that. Could be your basis of calculation. Or you can say, a lot of sixty are each side, each fire, there are hookups, or this, or that, and it would more sensitive, like, there's a, that. Or you can say, those sixty, ten sites, only a fire, one additional traffic susceptible. It's just that you have to give some of these, which you can bring, and for straight calculation, and division, or sixty, fifty, we won't set number. It went through, cost of bills so far. So lay out of a, a, where would the six go if you were loading them? Where would they go, like, say, if, would they be, what would it cost you to fire them? That, that if they gone to the window, then that gives us something, it's not a problem to do. That's my opinion.
Yeah, and at this point, at this point, it's, that, that's the way construction projects are done.
That makes sense, I mean, if they go to phase two, then you're gonna have to oversee again, you write a little charter, and it's not, that's not, it's gonna be too many to answer also, there will be a letter of credit.
It doesn't have to be stronger, right? The requirement's in there. Like, it's, it's there, so, so, you know, how much does the, all, I think what seriously trying to figure out, how much is that letter of credit? Is it, is it five hundred thousand dollars, or is it ten thousand dollars?
Not, not being a financial myself, you said the fact, basically, what happened?
Yeah, I think we have a better, better credit rate, right, too much. But, you, you know, again, all we're trying to do is, it's in just the CUP, but like, it's not negotiable. Like, we negotiated the CUP for three years, we're at this place, it's there. Like, like, if you want to take it out, we open the CUP and you're not to take it out, we'll, we'll have that conversation.
I don't wanna say what I'm gonna say, but I'm gonna say it anyhow. The sign on the Center Black Road is part of the CUP, it's not negotiable, it should go there, period.
I, I don't disagree, but we're trying to give them a break.
Yeah.
Since the planning board does not establish an amount, the amount of credit wasn't intended that the selectmen would determine the amount.
That's the option.
The selectmen, was, was that what you want?
Yeah, it's not our job, it's not. It's not our job to, to do that, so yeah, I mean.
And we also don't have eminent domain authorities, like, we can't, we can't.
We can't order the landowner to take the package, or fifteen more vehicles, it's definitely here. It's a sort of.
Sign order, like, so we don't have eminent domain authorities, we can't order the landowner to allow us to put a sign, any more than I could walk in your front yard and place a shed, like, the river of the sand board. But what you hear is, we're going into the discussion on all these points, and trying to work together to be in compliance with the CUP, to be set up on a, a range, and I get hooked to it at the end. That's what you're hearing.
So, okay.
So then I'm gonna, like, they're gonna put in X, Y, or Z, it's gonna be Hill, Hill, or, you know, uh, Hill here, Fur here, there's like six or seven of them on Center Black, to make sure that they are visualized in the sentence.
Some are off, right, some are off, right.
Not, 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 I believe, I'm not gonna argue about that, but I believe we're gonna find out that was just discussion, three hundred site can, extra traffic. We'll, we'll discuss that, that's the information. But, I, I don't, I don't know about the travel, I don't see any issues on it. But I want six or seven more five to go there, we're trying to keep in a nice, quiet, rural, beautiful area. I don't know if people want six or seven more five, like, they don't.
I, I agree with Gary, and I think it would be wonderful to file a, a, whatever you want.
So, I think a little, I think a little.
Well, no, I'm just imagining a public hearing, that's all.
That's, that's, yeah, yeah, material and, uh, related to the same goal, like.
Yeah, yeah, let's just bring it, and, and we'll, so we can talk about it, so we have it, kind of.
I'd be excited to get a couple, too, because I think you've really proved yourself, I feel that it's gone pretty smooth. I mean, you live on the road, and, and I'm not new to it, but there's never been any issues, things have been going pretty smooth. A lot of the years, I've been coming over, I've been talking to them, things seem to be going pretty good. And in the beginning, it's why I was scared, everybody was out in the engine, it's proved itself, I think.
Sure, and, and I know, I, I don't have any, uh, information, but I don't have a lot of information to, to disagree with, guys. Um, it was just a very long, start on that road again, and then it's moving short right at the time, so, um.
I, I think, I mean, I'm a planning board, but one of my concerns is that the whole plan, that the, our whole role is what the, is to be able to project, to inform our position on whether we, during the time you're not, thing would be true for other people who are operating under the CUP. So if there's a lot of compliance, that's an issue we have to adjust because it is. And there may be another CUP out there that has a compliance issue, that people on the town line to address, and know, like, you did a judgment, or you did a judgment.
I'm like, really, I've been here for years, yeah.
I mean, the planning board, but what you're saying is, one of my objectives, one of my objectives is to strive for that kind of one thing that I believe in.
And, uh, getting to the point that I would probably go down to Dodd Doyle, Dave, Dave Banks, and so, and so, and so, I have, uh, a letter from my manager to recommend.
So.
The other, Dodd Doyle has a CUP, so they control their.
Time.
Tent. So, although I know that John, Kevin, and their comp, they did, he's quite defensive of that, so better to go to.
If you're reading, and you're reading that, so, uh.
All right, what's next on the agenda? To get your voice checked, uh, voice checked, um. So, you, you're here. How did you want to talk to?
Um, I don't know, I didn't say, I brought the, um, part copy of the site application, to the west of the town.
Okay.
I knew that.
Does anybody have anything left over from the site office they wanted to discuss? Did that actually amend it?
Yes, the, 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 they're vague, so, they're vague, yeah.
Uh, no, I mean, I thought the site work was, uh, informative, uh, refreshing, uh, I thought it was pretty, pretty interesting to, I got seven texts.
I, I had, I had. I know, I had two, oh, like.
I would need the word.
You mentioned a lot of the question.
I wasn't saying you're going to do it, but it's kind of, you know.
I, I stepped outside my door, it's a mess.
I thought it was probably a problem of all.
Do, do you use permission?
Um, no, but I feel like I should start.
And my, my pants that I am sitting in, they're stable, and I treated it for permission. And before I go off, for walking the woods, I straight up.
That's my car, it's there.
I had, it's, it's.
Um, I called up, uh, the civil society, and I took a phone call, and, um, and, you know, he sort of gave it a rundown on the license. Um, and, you know, it sounds like preferences to, to move it back, and that will do. We talked with the team about putting some, uh, notes or detail on the plan, um.
Oh, we move on to the fascinating subject of. Stop taking it serious. And then the instructions were, were, that, that. I mean, you can, you can tell me if you don't want to, and I would love to hear you consider. Well, I, I thought, I thought Matt was gonna do like a schedule, and, and we were gonna.
I thought that too.
Like, I didn't prepare, I didn't prepare, and I'd be removing to a journey. I, well, let, let's, but, but, but hon, honestly, I, I did not prepare, because I, I was waiting for Matt, no joke, I mean.
He thought, like, he was gonna decide, you know, was he tempted to set a file for, and he was going to, maybe he has one, but no.
There you go. But, and it sounds super stupid, I totally admit it, but like, I wasn't willingly going to go reach it without Matt telling me to do it. And I totally apologize if that was a difference in what, in terms of that. It's really that kind of. Paul, you wanna talk to someone, I mean?
Uh, I have a free question, if you don't mind. Sure, um, I've been, I've been trying to follow what's going on, advice, the minutes on the website, and I started while we've, uh, been sending you, which has been very helpful. Uh, I'm curious about the quantity of subdivision applications and conditional use, Greg?
Yeah.
At some point, are those followed record?
They are.
Okay.
Well, am I correct, you, you're the application? The applications, uh, so, yeah, there's really not a, we have to talk through the. The application, the applications, uh, so, yeah, there's really not a, a, we have to call for the application, um...
A lot of them have big drawings, it's, it's, it's hard to, they, they have a lot of big drawings, it would be hard to digitize them.
Right, right, I mean, once we, once we start, I mean, I guess it's supposed to be a, that's why we said the division plans, you know, um, it, it...
Even if you talk to us, anyone else, uh, we haven't seen it yet, one of the things we push people to do is not to go out, obsession with work, now shall not go out onto a stinging power from the subdivision, that's nice. And then, with Merino, he said, what, so, that's what we're trying, we are trying to do, um, and he's looking at quote source, um, pretty much round level, Twitter, so many, okay, so...
I mean, he did a great job, and that, for what it bought, he did a great job.
Yeah, so you're right.
Definitely. It's very short of the quote there, yeah, his, like, he has like eight, kind of, upon two books, like, to, everything the board received, except for the big map, because it's hard to do that. But everything the board received, it just needed, we detached from it, and they would be online, um...
Yeah, I was, I, I remember when that dropped, it first was up, and I, that, a lot of that information was available, and that was very helpful.
Yeah, so that's a good reminder for us, that that's probably a better process.
Yes. You, you did do so, and we also, as a, as a, as a, like, Wes and I traded, you know, I, I think, uh, um, probably, yeah, I have to spend some time in the office, figuring out where everything is, and trying to get things back in order.
Those people like, hey, I need a CUP, tell me when you can, I gotta see you in like five minutes.
Well, it, the more I looked in the drawer, the, the one drawer that had all the CUPs, the, the more I realized it was somewhat organized, like, stumbled over an index page that was chanted between that, 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 that movement, and I was, oh, I want, it's number fifty-four.
Yeah, yeah, but it stopped around two thousand fourteen, because there was that gap here, two thousand fourteen, like, two thousand seventeen, when nothing happened. Yes, it was a year, two years ago, but we didn't have any, like, there's like twelve meetings, or, we actually had meetings, we came into session.
And then almost fifteen to twenty minutes, yeah, we usually stayed a little longer. Yeah, it's amazing to see people coming in and talking, you know? Are you, are you trying to look into that motion, Mr. M?
Rod, you think from here? Did you think we were gonna do that version tonight?
I didn't care.
Okay. I was gonna apologize to you, I could, please, guys.
No, no.
Ask you, what, what's your name?
Nina.
Nina?
Nina.
Nalima? Nalima.
Okay, I have a really good friend from, uh, Azerbaijan, who's named Nalima, it's really interesting, are you from Azerbaijan?
Yeah. So, you know, again, great to see you here, and I'm glad, glad to be here. Great. Okay?
Question again?
Oh, listen to you there, you go on, question, or, or not? So, I'm...